To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into our agenda, just join me for, please join me for a moment of silence to recognize the victims of nine eleven from twenty-two years ago. Thank you, and I also want to recognize before we get on with our agenda, citizen and resident of our district who was big school supporter Dick Wickham passed away last week. It would be a great loss, but he was very big in the community, and I know he was recognized at graduation ceremony when Bob stood in for me and spoke at graduation. So I'm glad that Bob had that chance to do that and just very grateful for all the things that Dick Wickham did for our community and Georgia, his wife. We'll be all sending our prayers her way and giving her support. So next up, is there any citizen request to speak?
No.
No? Okay.
That's personnel. We don't do that at this time.
Yeah. All right, very, keep moving. We'll go to reports. Back to school update, Nick.
Yep, so just a couple of things back to school update. We're officially about two weeks into the school year, two short weeks, I guess, but things are going very well. Transportation has gone for the most part pretty well. If you think back to some of our years in the past, it's gone really well. We've had a lot of positive feedback from food service and the change in partners there. So definitely, you know, really appreciate that, and staff seem to be going in good direction. So things are going really well, just we have our back to school barbecue for staff and their families that's coming up on Thursday. That'll be just right outside, inside the gate, the outside of the soccer game and volleyball game. So encourage board members if you'd like to stop by. I think that starts at five thirty, is that right? Goes to about seven o'clock. So if you'd like to stop by, feel free to do so. A couple other updates, UU property update and district office update. So as you may or may not be aware, we did get the for sale sign up on the UU property. We've had three or four potential individuals that have, you know, I guess articulated some level of interest or questions about the property. So that's, that's been interesting. We've had another three or four neighbors that have asked, what's the plan for the property? And, you know, I think the, the common response they're getting from me is, you know, we'd be interested in entertaining proposals or from, from developers or whatever, what they might think they'd want to see the property developed to and what they'd like to purchase it from, but there's not a fixed price tag on the property per acre. I have conveyed to them that the board would like to see residential housing and preferably in the, in the area of more of an entry level or young family type of housing in order to spur some growth. So as far as district office update, we're in the process of getting the appraisal on the district office, should have that in the next week or two. So we'll have an idea what the district office value is compared to what it takes for us to move into a different facility, and we'll get that information to the board as soon as we have it. So we're moving forward on that. So those, those two options are those two items. So any questions? Okay, hearing none.
All right, move on to seclusion and restraint report. Next, Tara.
In front of you, you will see our annual reporting for seclusion and restraint data. I did add today, so you didn't see it before, our historical data down on the bottom. And you can see we are just a tad decreased from what we were before. We've been slowly decreasing. We had a really unique year, and I wasn't here that year, so I don't have any background data where we had extremely high numbers. But this year's trending with similar data. We have zero students. Gen ed students, unfortunately, all of our seclusion and restraints are students with disabilities. And just reminder for what a seclusion or restraint is, it's whenever there's an imminent danger to self and others. So for example, if we have a kid refusing to get out from under the table, we will not move that child. We will wait them out all day. We won't physically take them out and move them. So it's only imminent danger to self and others. Questions on this report?
And this is a...
Correct. So it looks a tad different down the bottom, what DPI wants us to, before it was just an annual report to you guys, now we have to report it to DPI. So the bottom there is what exactly gets reported to DPI.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I just wondered for everybody if you could give us the definition of what exactly a seclusion and a physical restraint is.
Yep, I have it right here. So restraint is a physical, it's a student who's physically being, or I don't have restraint, I have seclusion first, a student physically being prevented from leaving when the student is not, they can't leave by physical means. So we can't have any locks on the doors. So it may be a student who elopes, and if we, they run, we may block the door just with their body so they can't leave. We might put just a table or a block or something that they can't leave. So they physically can't leave. Same with restraints, we put hands on students. We may transport them to a safe spot. Teachers are trained in CPI, so there's a variety of different transports depending on if they're flailing, if we, for safety, we need to do a two-person hold, usually under the shoulders, and lift them to where they need to be. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. Years ago, I think they used to do some closeting and that kind of thing for restraint, or seclusion, excuse me. Do they still do that sort of thing?
Explain what you mean.
There used to be a closet in the special ed room that, the door that they would shut kids into if they were out of control.
There is a space where we've, where most of our students, our EBD students were at Hudson Prairie, that they've used, but they've used that more for independent work, but sometimes that's the only safe space in that room where they have to be in that smaller room.
Okay.
But like I said, there's no locks on the doors. They go in, that's more of a cooldown room. It also depends on, it would only count as a seclusion if they're prevented from leaving. We may put them in there to cool them down, you know, have a moment. It would only count if we say they can't leave.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, and it's good to see that the numbers are decreasing in all the, from the prior years. So thank you.
The training really focuses on de-escalation. Another thing to notice is this also includes any law enforcement, seclusion or restraints. So we have to report on that, and any students who are placed outside our district in some kind of behavioral facility, we have to report on that. So that doesn't mean that all of these necessarily happened in our building.
Any other questions? Right, hearing none. Enrollment update, Andrea.
Okay, so as you can see in the enrollment document, which was updated as recently as later this afternoon, overall, the elementary specifically, that we have two sections that we've been watching the most closely at Willow River, the K is one student above our class size guidelines at twenty-three a room, and then our first grade at Willow River is also at twenty-two and then twenty-three. So those we're, continue to watch and have conversations about how to best support those teams, but at the same time, you can see throughout this entire document, there's a lot more green than there is red. And so some of those class signs, class sizes that were bubbling up quite a bit, such as fourth grade at River Crest, is now within our class size guidelines. And so we'll continue to monitor this as we do on a weekly basis, really, to see if there's anything that occurs as problematic over time. In addition, the high school, middle school numbers are here. Specifically with high school, middle school, you can see it hasn't changed a whole lot from June 2023 until September first, 2023. A little bit down for both buildings by a few kids, and again, we'll continue to monitor this, but this is just the latest lay of the land as of today.
Okay. Any questions on student enrollment? Our third Friday enrollment is what's official and what gets reported DPI.
Exactly, and I believe financial services primarily handles that because of all the intricacies of how they calculate those numbers. This is much more reflection of what's currently in that class, any particular class section and building and grade.
Okay. But so final numbers will be on Friday.
Correct.
And but, and based on the elementary ones that we were showing, sections and so forth, right now, no, if nothing changes on here at all, there's no changes expected?
Correct.
Any other questions from any board members? Seeing, hearing none, move on to action agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes?
So before we move on to the action agenda, I did want to make an announcement. Some of you know that I've experienced a significant transition in my personal life over the past few years, and as a result, have been thinking about transitioning to a new home, assuming this would happen within a year or two after my youngest child, who is a senior this year, had graduated. And one of those proverbial opportunities you can't turn down came up, and that timeline has been significantly unexpectedly accelerated. And while I'm very excited about this, my new home is outside of the Hudson School District boundaries, which of course means that once I move, I will no longer be eligible to serve on this school board. I am therefore submitting my resignation from the school board effective November 30th, 2023. I am sad to be leaving this board. I am proud of the work that we've done and know that we still have more to do in support of our mission and collective commitment to provide a rigorous student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all students. I'm not moving out of the region, so we'll be watching with pride the work and continued success of this district. It's been an honor to serve on this board, and I thank all of you members of the board, administration, staff, community members, for your support.
Right. Well, thank you for that announcement, Heather, and I guess we will be, you know, at a future meeting talking about what the procedure is for filling your vacancy, but you're announcing in advance. I appreciate that advance notice, but you still have five more meetings and an annual retreat to go to. All right. So more to come with that, but thank you for the announcement. Now we will, and thank you for your service too, and look forward to completing, finishing all the way through the finish line there. Topics for discussion, possible action consent agenda, I want to entertain a motion with the expenditures that are on the screen behind us.
Mr. President? I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,978,286.05.
Second. All right, motion by Heather, second by Bob, and we have no discussion on this, but all those in favor of approving the consent agenda and the expenditures as expressed, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. So our minutes are approved, personnel changes, which happens, I think, every month, regardless of time of year, just busier at certain times. But next up, Bonnie, how are we doing for the preliminary budget, which we're actually going to be the main topic for our annual meeting, but we've been watching this for several months, and it's only been really two full months that the legislature was done with its work and we kind of knew where things stood, so.
Yep, so last, at your committee of the whole, we definitely, we went over the budget. If you want to go to the next page for the major assumptions, the state this year did increase the revenue limit calculation as $325 per pupil, so that was good news for the district. We had been frozen for the last two years, so although it's not what we had hoped, it is definitely moving in the right direction. State per pupil aid is set at $742 per pupil. There was an increase in categorical aid, and it is now at 33.3%, so that will be on expenses that we incur this year, will receive that, that percentage. We did have a swing in our equalization aid. We, there was a decrease of 4.2 million in our general aid, so although we don't lose that, it just shifts from equalization aid to the property levy. So that will, that did affect the mill rate a little bit. We should bounce back next year because we will be counting students in summer school this year, so that will help our enrollment. Our estimated mill rate at this time is 8.53, which is down from 8.84, so there was about a three and a half percent decrease in our mill rate, so that was a good thing. Due to enrollment in the district, we were able to make about $800,000 of reductions in staffing throughout the district. Really, that was due to lower class, I, just not needing as many areas and, and really took, taking a hard look at some areas when we had resignations. All of our settlements are in place with all of our organizations, so that's great, and those are finalized. We did have an eight percent increase in health insurance premiums this year, but not, zero increase in dental premiums. And lastly, this is our last year of our ESR funding, so we have about $1.1 million. We have a plan to spend that out for the remainder of the year, but that basically reflects at the, in summary, what the board will be approving tonight in the budget. And then if you go to the next page, it's just a summary of the budget. So this year's operating budget for Fund Ten would be $75,615,450. At this point, we are recommending it would be a balanced budget. Last year, we did estimate a $2 million to put into the fund balance, but this year would be a balanced budget. There are some committed and restricted and unassigned fund balance summary, which is on the bottom of the page. The board took action of these, I believe, in June, so those have all been done and reported to our auditor as part of our audit. And then the final pages is the state document that we have to utilize to adopt the budget. So we would just need a motion to approve the budget as presented, and again, in October, once we get everything finalized, we'll bring it back to set the actual levy.
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second, yeah, further discussion regarding the budget. These numbers look real familiar with what we looked at two weeks ago, and I don't think they had changed from two weeks before that. So like you said, some of these things, we were hoping for a little more in some areas, like the special ed and so forth, but it's pretty well set. The one question I did have, because I had seen that there was either going to be the legislature trying to call itself into session to override the governor's veto about this extra $325 per year per pupil for the next hundred-some years to twenty-four, or 300 years. Four hundred years, thank you. It's going to be a little bit longer than I expect to live, but that, it was either going to be a lawsuit or a special session or anything. Regardless of what they do in that regard, that's not going to impact this year's $325 increase, but something that could affect for subsequent years. Okay. But when you're multiplying by fifty-three hundred, fifty-four hundred students, that it gets to be a chunk of change. All right, any other questions, concerns? Hearing, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the preliminary, we call it that until it's, the levy is actually officially set in October for '23, '24, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Now, Nick, subsumed within this discussion of the budget that we just approved as a board and is yet to be approved by the community, but for that operational referendum discussion, how are we sitting? It's kind of looking at a little bit different place than we were a year ago at this time when we were talking about going to let, referendum.
Yeah, I think, and Bonnie can allude to it, but we have some new budget projections. So we still are planning on potentially down the road, running some, running some deficits. But one of the things that, you know, we have done, and say, why, how all of a sudden do we go from needing eight million last year to now, we're not talking about an operational levy? Well, a couple of things is, we knew that in the beginning, we didn't need the eight million in the very first year. We only needed a couple million in the very first year, but it was to go once and then not have to keep going back to the voters to get it changed. But also, there's a couple of big assumptions that have been changed since, over the last year. One, we cut over $800,000 with the staffing out of the budget. We heard from feedback from the community that they wanted to see us make some cuts first before they, we continue to, to ask for additional funds. Also, we have the additional revenue stream that, you know, we hadn't had in past years or in previous models, which is about an additional million dollars a year in investment incomes. And then on, on top of that, we've made some adjustments to how do we fund our transfer to special education, Fund 27 transfers, which is about a million dollar difference as well. So the, the three, those three items right there equal almost $3 million worth of shifts for us as we make some adjustments. And as the board's fund balance has, has climbed, and you have a target fund balance by policy of 25 to 30%, we could go a couple of years to spend that, you know, to spend that down. As we look at it, right now, Bonnie's projections, and she can go through them, but they're pretty, pretty conservative. They have us declining in enrollment by a hundred kids, I think, this year, and then another 50 the year after, and then another 20, and then, then kind of bottoming out. But I think, you know, the, the big piece as of right now, there's not a recommendation to go for an operational referendum this coming, this coming spring, and we'll continue to get a better enrollment picture in a couple of weeks and see just where we're sitting. We would anticipate as our enrollment shrinks, as it works up through the high school, we're going to start to see some reductions there. We've made some reductions at the administrative levels as well, and the district levels, and so just wanted to put it out there, because I think some people have asked us in the past, how are we sitting? Originally, with our original budget numbers, we thought we were going to be about a million to a million and a half deficit. This current year, we're able to get that within, within a balanced budget. So right now, I don't think we're looking at needing to go to an operational referendum. We can push it back a little bit and hopefully provide some relief to taxpayers not needing to, to go to that right now. Bonnie, I don't know if there's anything you want to interject?
Mr. President?
Okay, we got a couple of board members, but Bonnie, you were shaking your head.
No, I, I think you pretty well covered it. I mean, I, it, it, budget projections is very hard, especially when it's time to student enrollment, and, you know, you don't have that till your third Friday in September. We did get some clarity on our revenue increases from the state, at least for the next two years, but, you know, that could change after those two years, and we made some general assumption about wage increases, benefit increases, so it's kind of our best bet, but I think, you know, may, being a little proactive and making budget reductions has helped our, our forecast.
All right, Megan?
Just to make sure I fully understand the special education transfer, it's because in the past, we were overestimating how much money would be spent on special education, so the money was sitting there and not being spent, and now we're using a more accurate projection that matches the past. It's not that we're spend, we're not spending what we need to on special ed.
No, no, we're not, we, we're not cutting special ed funding or anything like that. We just, we have a, a better way to kind of look back on it and get a little bit better handle on what the Fund 27 transfer is. So fully funding special ed, we're not balancing the budget by cutting special ed funding or anything like that. We're required by law to do that, and we, we would do it regardless, because it's the right thing to do.
Bob?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, as far as for people in the public that might say, well, you know, you were going, you were asking us for eight million dollars reoccurring, even if that had passed, we would have the freedom as a board not to use, not to go for that full eight million, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, the last time the board went to an operational referendum was back, I think, in 2001 or 2002. You actually didn't even utilize that referendum until this last year, because you were under-levied up until this point. And so the, the rationale was with that, for the eight million, was that was for the foreseeable future, what we thought, you know, the worst-case scenario could be, but at any point, the board, at the board table decides what they want to levy. And so the previous 15, 16 years collectively, the board has not levied over $120 million in property taxes that by law, they had the ability to do so. So there has been fiscal restraint shown by the district.
Thank you. And along those lines of fiscal constraint, I mean, we, you know, when we had COVID, you know, kind of came upon us in 2020, we started doing projections, because we didn't know what impact. We knew, or we thought that the economy was going to tank, and it could tank for a long time, and so we did some things then, and as far as budgeting and potential expenditures, and the good news is that we didn't end up as far in going into the fund as, in fact, we added to the fund.
Yes.
Over the last three years, so.
Correct.
All right. Any other comments or questions about that part of it, but no, no motion in front, it's just an explanation of how we went from projecting a million-plus deficit to a balanced budget for this year and no immediate need for an operational. Next up then, Nick, how about the '23, '24 Hudson School District goals?
So these are the same goals that we went through with you two weeks ago and took the feedback. We did break out in the, on the student set of goals, we did break out our different subgroups and didn't use it as an average, as you can see, but we did make it for FAY, which remember, that's full academic year, so that we're really comparing, you know, the same group of students to each other as we work through that. Otherwise, these are the exact same goals that, that you saw two weeks ago, and administration's recommendation that the board would approve these goals for the '23, '24 school year.
All right. Is there any questions of Nick? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve. And just so everyone is clear, we're talking about approving the goals for our students, our team, and our community. We have, those three areas have been where we've had goals for the last three years at least.
I move that we approve the '23, '24 district goals as presented. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving these district goals signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Last on our action agenda is the future search community engagement. All right, Nick?
Yep, absolutely. So you, what you have there is a memo they put together, the board asked me to kind of do a little bit more background research, talk, reach out to some other firms as it relates to community engagement. Remember, the community engagement activity is really in, in effort to continually understand what the community wants out of the school district and make sure we're heading in the direction that they want us to go. And so originally, I had reached out to Drew Hawke, Hawke &amp; Associates, he came very highly recommended to do what's called the Future Search Project, which is a multi-night, large-scale community conversation with stakeholder mapping and a lot of different pieces. And the board just wanted to make sure that, you know, the, the type of project and the funding and things and the cost associated with that was, was within the ballpark of what other consultants would be. I did reach out to three other groups, CISO, Joe Schroeder from ASA, and Donovan, the Donovan Group, I'm sorry, you know, and got proposals from two out of those three. The one competitor actually recommended Drew and said, there's nobody better to do this work than him, which I think is a good endorsement of, of Drew and his work. And so all the, you know, the prices, and I forwarded you the emails, all the prices were within, within the range, really looking for, not necessarily approving a contract or anything like that, but just approving that process, the future search process that Drew went over with you guys during the work session, so that we can start on the planning piece with, with Drew and getting the community more involved as we get ready to set our direction for our next strategic plan in the coming years. Any questions that you have?
Mr. President?
Megan?
I just want to say thank you, Nick, or Dr. Willett, for following up and looking at a, a few other options. I'm, I'm really excited about Drew's proposal and how highly recommended he comes, and I think it's a fantastic time to get this community conversation going as we look for our next strategic plan. So thanks for all the work you put into this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, I just would echo Megan's sentiments, but also the fact that this is a $25,000 expenditure, it's, to me, not really an option that we would not engage the community, and I think we want to do, you know, have it done by somebody who comes highly recommended, number one. And number two, I agree with Megan as well on the timing, instead of waiting until our current five-year strategic plan is almost done and then start looking around for engagement, because the community engagement is only the first part of setting the action plan for putting a strategic plan in place.
Correct.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, any other comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this timeline and moving down this path. Motion to approve. Is there?
Second.
Second by Heather, motion by Bob. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We're done a little early. Does anybody else have anything to talk about? Or? Okay, we could, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. We are adjourned and we will be back at 6:30 for our annual meeting. Thank you.